It's supposed to. It might be raining when we leave. Brother.
What's that?
Don't try to get me in trouble.
I gotta go see this.
Awesome, thank you. Oh.
I'm not sure what that means, but.
All right. Well, we'll find out. Good evening. It's now the appointed time of 5:30. Please rise for the August 31st, 2021 Committee of the Whole meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulginsy.
Here.
Alderwoman Decenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Connelly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin. Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Madam Chair, quorum is present.
Thank you. Do we have approval for the Tuesday, August 10th, 2021 Committee meeting minutes?
Some of.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, I think we have a presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we'd ask former Alderman Proctor to step forward. And we didn't get a chance to do it at the last city council meeting, but we wanted to give him his recognition that he well deserves and a couple of the projects that were happening, of course, YMCA project, the double extension of downtown Tiff. But most importantly, for the people in Enos Park, it's about housing restoration, things of that nature. He's been instrumental in that, especially with the home improvement loan program they helped put together and move that direction. So we want to award you this plaque on behalf of the city council and the citizens. And it has our favorite saying, or my favorite saying, says, "Government of the people, by the people, for the people," by Abraham Lincoln, and appreciation for his public service. The City of Springfield commends Andrew Proctor for his commitment, sincerity, and dedication to our residents, neighborhoods, and community. Ward five Alderman from 2015 to 2021. So congratulations, and we appreciate and wish you the best of luck.
Appreciate.
In your future endeavors.
Thank you much.
So thank you.
Thank you. I did have a speech prepared, but I know I won't be able to get through it. And I know my former colleagues like quick meetings, so we'll get this done quick. But I do have my last agenda that I was here for, and I'd appreciate if you all could sign it for me. It's going away, so. Just really want to quickly thank city staff, because we have some of the best city workers here that any city could ask for. Police, fire, public works, everybody. At the end of the day, the Aldermen are just like the conduits of information, and it's the city staff that have the direct impact on citizens' lives and stuff, so I appreciate that. And I really want to thank Tim Griffin and Jeanette Bland. They've been like my work family. They're great people, they're saints. Without their help, none of this, I don't think would be possible, so appreciate it. And then last, just want to thank my former colleagues on the city council. It's been a true honor to work with you, to help lead the city. It's been an honor in my life, and I will truly, I will miss it, but it's time for next chapter in my life. So I appreciate the opportunity, and everybody stay safe, God bless.
All right. Oh, we have everyone's. Moving on to ordinances tabled or remaining in committee, do we have any movement on any of those ordinances? Hearing none, let's move along to CWLP.
Will do.
Clerk?
Let me sign my name real quick here.
Go right ahead.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin asked me to let people know he's dealing with family matters, and that's the reason why he couldn't be here. He's moving his son.
We'll accept that excuse.
I'll tell him I'll let you know.
We'll mark him excused.
Are you ready, Madam Chair?
Yes.
CWLP, 2021, 338, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 22-06-30, Unit 4 Cooling Tower Maintenance with Ameritech Tower Services LLC in an amount not to exceed $110,257 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Chair.
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. I'm getting messages that there's no sound.
It just came back on.
Did it come back on? Okay, thank you.
We have something. Thanks, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
2021, 339, an ordinance authorizing payment to Itron Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $50,652 for hosting services for media reader data for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2021, 340, an ordinance approving the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with telecommunication contract services with Southern Illinois University School of Medicine for 315 West Carpenter for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move to consent.
Second. We have a motion and a second for consent. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
2021, 341, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of a license agreement with Midwest Marine Construction LLC for shoreline stabilization work at Lake Springfield for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
We have a motion for consent and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Public Works, 2021, 342, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Leland Grove for overlaying Chatham Road for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
A motion for debate at a minimum.
So.
Second.
I think it's got to go to debate.
For debate?
If anyone wants to debate.
Is there any discussion on this?
Discussion?
Yes.
I think that we want to get Chatham Road completed, and it's a high priority. We don't know yet what the bidding will look like on this contract. The bidding has not been opened yet, so we don't know the cost, and we don't know what grants yet. After talking with Nate Bottom today, we don't know what grants are available. So as a consequence, we don't know how much loan the City of Springfield will be giving to Leland Grove, a private municipality. I think we got to be concerned about the City of Springfield becoming a bank to the local villages around us, because if we lend out money to the villages, that's money that's not available for Ward one, for Ward two, for Ward three, et cetera. So I think we got to be concerned about that. I know, you know, Ward seven surrounds not only Leland Grove, but Jerome as well. And Jerome has always been reaching out to the city, "Help us with Isles Boulevard Street." And I'm worried about the precedent of this. If this becomes a short-term loan, I think I can vote yes to it. But if it's a long-term loan, eight years, and we don't know how much is being lent out, I think we had to have to think this through. So I was hoping this could be placed on motion for this discussion tonight, and then continue it till next week till we know more. If, I know the mayor of Leland Grove is here, if the mayor would like to give us an update on what their grant status is, and if those grants have come through and what amounts, I think that'd be helpful.
Alderman Redpath?
So do I understand that this is a eight-year note, or is that, or we don't know yet?
It's written up to be a loan of eight years.
And we don't, but we don't know the amount?
We don't know the amount.
I'm going to have trouble voting for this unless I see some numbers. The amount, basically, in an eight-year note, we're, you know, we could be in hard times and need the money, so that's the only thing I'm concerned about.
Alderwoman Connelly?
Thank you. And I probably just need some clarification. I thought it says 1.4 million in the ordinance. Is that not the correct amount?
This is, this is 1.4.
Yes.
That's correct. That's our cost estimate this time. Could come in lower, but the bid opening is actually scheduled for this Thursday at 2:00 PM.
So we'll know all the numbers by then? Director?
Thank you. My name is Mary Jo Bangard. I'm the mayor of Leland Grove. I appreciate the City of Springfield. We have done many projects together, and I appreciate your willingness to reach out and to help us, because everyone, whether Springfield, Leland Grove, Jerome, we're all one big community. We work together. We patronize all the same businesses, so I do appreciate that. We have written $1 million in grants, three through Senator McClure, one through Representative Murphy, three are membership grants, one is capital funding. We have been assured that everything is right online to go through, and within, when we, last conversation I had with DECO office, we were assured that the $400,000 would be within a couple weeks. I said, "Are we assured of this money?" I was told yes. And I understand, yeses don't always happen, but I've been working with this group of people for a year and a half, and unfortunately, due to COVID, and the same department is working on this type of grants, they're working on the Cures Grants, they're working on the American Relief Grant, and so some things had to be pushed to the back. They know you are a part of the city agreement. We have worked closely with Nate, we have worked closely with, I always forget his name, David Whitworth, and the mayor on this. We've also worked closely with them on a line I rode, which we completed also before and wasn't originally included in this grant, this loan, when we first requested this loan and came to you in 2019. And at that time, we were seeking $800,000. And at that time, it had been approved, but when we had the opportunity to write for a million dollars in grants, we had to take it. Our working budget is $1.3 million. Can we do this project without you? We would have to seek other arrangements, and we would probably have to delay it for a little bit longer. Is it going to be a short-term loan? Our hope it is. Our hope is that as soon as we get the million dollars and we can process the papers, we will give that to you as soon as we can get that to you. And then we will go back, and I do believe we can cut it. I will, without having the numbers in my, in front of me, I am a positive we can cut it in half to four, if not less, but I definitely say we can do four. Do I, do, any questions from you?
Alderwoman Connelly?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you coming in tonight. I want you to know, I'm actually in favor of this. I get more complaints about that particular stretch of road than I get about any road that's actually in Ward eight. It's, I've had people contact me with their tires have been blown out, with swerving to avoid some of those, you know, potholes and almost hitting someone else. We are charging an interest rate in this. It's, it is a low, I think, reasonable interest rate for.
Very generous.
Between, yes, between two governments. And I would like to point out also that the City of Springfield is taking on the engineering for this.
Yes.
But this is, this is a stretch, Chatham Road is a stretch that creates so many problems, and personally, well, I respect Alderman McMenamin and Alderman Redpath. Yes, it's, it's a big, it is a bigger chunk of money for us, but you're committed to paying it back. You have ongoing property tax revenue also that you can contribute towards this, and that stretch of road is very heavily traveled, and it's a constant source of complaints. Some of those come from me.
And what I also have to say, in the finance, when I say four years, I know we already have money set aside for this project, so we do have money set aside for it. Our problem is, we don't have the money, the working capital, to pay the contractors, all of it, when they need it.
So can I ask, how much do you have set aside currently?
About $200,000.
Okay.
Alderman Gregory?
Thank you. I do agree. I would be interested in just seeing what the number is. I do support this, as this will be beneficial to all citizens of Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Hanauer?
I think it's important to understand that we have quite a few roads, especially in the outskirts of town, where city might own a portion, and then township owns a portion. And it, I can tell you from where we'll fix up our portion and the township doesn't, it doesn't matter. It's the city, they blame the city.
Yep.
They don't care that it's Leland Grove or Jerome. It's a city. They look at Chatham Road as being a city road. You know, there are, we've got Lynn Har Road to the, north of Isles is a perfect example where we don't own it. But the problem that people, people don't want to hear that we don't own it, they just want it fixed. And we have a lot of people from Westchester, Lincolnshire, Sherwood, every, you know, coming down to Chatham Road, they're still going to be livid if we don't do this. I, and I understand the reasons, but I think it's important that we, we get this done. If we're not going to do it, maybe we start on the north end and work our way south until they can get the money. I don't know. But I think it's just better to do the whole thing and be done with it, because it's not going to get any cheaper to do. So, thank you.
I do want to say one more thing. We have worked together on other projects. We worked together with you on Cherry Road several years ago. We've worked together with you on Laurel, on parts of that. We, our boundaries are not clear-cut boundaries in Leland Grove. There are city, there are like four houses that I know of that are in Wildwood that are in City Springfield. We still take care of the road in front of their house. We still do things. I think we have a great working relationship. We have always had a great working relationship, and I think we need to continue it for many reasons, for many reasons. And I thank each and every one of you for your dedication and looking over things and questioning.
Alderman McMenamin?
Yep. You know, we had a really good plan three years ago, when we were going to break up this project into four parts. And we did the first part, which was Springfield from the bridge at Montvale up to just beyond Christ the King. And our plan was to do one-fourth one year after the next, and we didn't want to do it all at once, because that would mean horrific traffic problems along the entire stretch. And we've got significant traffic problems this morning. Traffic was backed up at Lawrence and other intersections. So, so we got the one-fourth done for Springfield in 2019. Then last year, we were hoping that, and I sponsored the ordinance, to go with Leland Grove and do their section. And unfortunately, for various reasons, it didn't get done. And then this spring, in 2021, I learned, very, to my great disappointment, that Leland Grove wasn't ready to go yet. So then what we did was, and Mayor, thank you for this, we accelerated what was going to be in two different years. We did Ward seven, Ward eight, and Ward nine, all the way up to Jefferson. And that's about a two-month project. It's, it reduces laneage and all the rest. So I'm with everyone here that said that the portion of this road that belongs to Leland Grove is extraordinarily important, and we got to get it done. I'm not sure we have to get it done this year. I think it's going to be highly disruptive, and I'm not sure that the, we'll see how the bidding comes, and we'll see if the bidders have enough labor and resources to actually get it done this fall. But I don't see a rush to this at this point. I think basically, we're still on schedule based on the plan we had started three years ago. I hope we, we, you know, we get the Springfield portion done, which is seven, eight, and nine. I also want to point out that, you know, I've thought this through, and constituents have said to me, "Joe, why are we a bank to Leland Grove? Leland Grove has the highest median property values in our area. So when Springfield wants to do road improvements, we have to raise taxes on our citizens." During my time on the council, we raised sales taxes twice. And so I would think that, you know, a better financing process for Leland Grove would be to raise taxes on their citizens, just like we have to raise taxes on ours. And so that's another concern I have from my constituents. So I want to get this road done. I would like to see what grants come through. As I understand it, those grants could total up to more than 1.4 million.
One million.
They'll total up to 1 million. So I'd like to see what those grants come out to, and what the bidding is on the, for the Leland Grove portion of the road, which we'll know by the end of the week. And let's see then if we can do a short-term loan, with assurance that there's a method to pay it back. So that'd be my recommendation to the council. It's on debate, we can talk about it some more next week.
Alderman McMenamin, I respect your thoughts. We didn't move forward. This was approved in 2019, as I said earlier. We didn't move forward because we have grant money. Our property value, we only have, we operate on real estate tax only and MFT. We do not have any commercial, commercial businesses. We get no money from anything other than our property taxes, and I think over the years, we have managed to do roadwork and everything within our budget. This unfortunately is our entire year's budget. We do not have the working capital to pay the contractors when the bills come in. And so that is why we are seeking a loan, and it was approved for 800,000 in 2019 with no grants applied for. We are asking for 1.4 with a million dollars in grants that'll be put towards it. As soon as we get bills and everything, it's a reimbursement grant, and as soon as we get the bill from you, you know, we'll get the bill, you'll pay, you'll give us the money, we'll pay it, and we'll shoot that off to the state immediately, and we will reimburse you. We do not want to hang on to this for eight years, as much as you don't want to hang on to it for eight years. But I appreciate moving forward, and we would have moved forward last year. We would have moved forward this year earlier. But when a million dollars is in over here, you want to make sure you're going to get it to help pay for what you're doing. So I do respect your comments.
Thanks for those explanations. So this ordinance is now set for a $1.4 million loan. Do you have any problem if we amend it next week to 0.4 million, to 400,000 instead of 1.4 million?
I do, because we do not have the mon, we can, our grants are reimbursement grants, so we have to be able to pay the contractor upfront, then get the money from the state. So that is why we are seeking a loan, so that we can do it that way. Because we don't have a million dollars, if, well, we do, it'd take our entire budget. We wouldn't have a police department, we wouldn't have a street department. Then they would be calling you about our streets not being plowed or anything else. That's how we would have to do it.
Alderwoman Connelly?
Thank you, Chair. And Alderman McMenamin, I think you do make a good point, that this, this council has raised sales taxes. But Mayor, you made another very good point, which is the fact that your residents do their shopping in the City of Springfield. I mean, effectively, we've raised the taxes for everyone in your.
They're paying them.
Yes, they are. You know, I actually briefly lived in, in Leland Grove, very briefly, after I got married, and all of my grocery shopping, all of the back-to-school supplies, everything was done in the City of Springfield. So I understand your concern, Alderman McMenamin, but I'm also looking at a road that, again, the most complaints I get are about those potholes, and it's this particular stretch, and that stretch connects Ward eight to businesses on the south, on the south end of Chatham, Springfield businesses. I'd like to go to Schnucks without being concerned about getting a flat tire, and I had, I had someone very recently reach out to me and say, you know, they did blow a tire out, trying to go to the grocery store that's in the City of Springfield. It's a silly patchwork sometimes that we deal with in this, in Springfield. It's, it's interesting, and it can be very frustrating. So I think it's important that we, as municipalities, cooperate and work together, because, I mean, in the end, our sales tax increases are your residents' fees also, and your potholes are blowing tires in my ward. So.
Well.
I'd like to see this get done as soon as possible.
Thank you.
And if we can expedite it, that would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is moved for debate?
Yep.
Alderman Redpath?
Mayor, I'd like to help you. I hope that we can work out some kind of compromise, but I can, I can just tell you that I, I don't know how in good conscience I could vote for this. I have some of the worst roads in Springfield at the lake, and I have, the taxpayers in my ward pay enormous amount of money, but there, we have terrible roads out there. And for me to say I'm going to vote to send money to another municipality and we can't fix our own roads, it's going to be hard for me to do. If we can come up with a compromise where we can get the money and be assured that we're going to get it back at a reasonable time, I don't have a problem voting for it. But as it stands, I'm going to have to oppose this.
Well, if you would like to talk to me, unfortunately, I am, got some personal things going on right now, but I do have an email address that I left you a card that you can email me.
I got your card.
Or if you would like to talk to our city administrator, you could call him. If you would like his number, I can give you his number, and he could talk to you.
All you guys need to do is make, give us assurances on when we're going to get the money back. I don't, I don't see that an eight-year note going out. I can't vote for that.
Well, I would say the million, you'll get within a year.
Okay.
The million, you're going to get within a year.
So by next week, we'll, we'll know the numbers from our director, and we'll see if, if it works out. Otherwise, I won't be able to support this.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Motion for debate and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Finance, 2021, 353, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Archi Images Incorporated for architectural designs services for up to three fire stations in the amount not to exceed $750,000 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move to debate.
Second. Move to debate and seconded. Do we have any discussion on this? Yes, Alderman Hanauer?
Thank you. I'm a little concerned, a couple things. We have not seen a report from the, from the consultant yet on what they've recommended. I think it'd be premature, I'd really like to hold this, but it, I think it'd be premature to move on this until we see what they recommend. My biggest concern is, based on the plans that's gone forward, we do not have anything in the southwest part of town proposed. The southwest part of town is one of the largest growing areas of the city, and these, these houses will be there for, these firehouses will be in place. these houses will be there for, these firehouses will be in place probably for the next 20 years or, or more. And, uh, quite frankly, we need to plan on going where we know there's growth. And we're, and from what I've seen so far, we haven't. And, uh, you know, I understand that we have to move some houses. I appreciate that. But I think it's, it's a disservice to the southwest part of town that we're not looking at a, at a house out there. We've got land at, um, city land, and it was originally proposed back in, the plans with the fire department at one time, um, at, uh, Woodside Road and Route Four. And, uh, I, I just think that we need, we need it, um, out, out in that area. I know we, and thank God for Chatham, we, we have Chatham, uh, assisting out there. But Chatham doesn't have the level of fire department as we do. And, uh, that's, that's my biggest concern about this. So...
Anyone else for discussion? Alderman McMenamin?
I can't vote for this in, with the current amount of information that we have. I, I believe, um, Alderman Conley properly asked for a copy of the contract, and so you received a copy of the contract, uh, from the architectural firm. I don't believe the rest of us, uh, received that yet. I mean, I, I think, um, Tim Edmond should monitor that when one Alderman asked for it, and, and I thank you for asking for it. Someone else should have realized that none of the others of us had it either. And this kind of presents a problem for, when we bring ordinances on, uh, on first reading by exception to the rules. I remember when this one came on two weeks ago, it immediately got a lot of discussion going. And then I realized after the fact that we don't have a copy of the contract with the, uh, architectural firm. I've received some phone calls about, some questions about the size, the dollar size of this contract, 750,000. I think that represents roughly, I think, what's intended to be 6% of the overall spending amount. So this would be a contract for the design phase and to monitor the construction phase. So if this is meant, 6, 750,000 is meant to be 6% or 7%, whatever it is of the ultimate construction bill. That's a lot of money. That's up in the range of eight to nine million dollars. And I think we need to know where that money's gonna come from. And, and then we need a broad discussion about repositioning these firehouses. I think we've had discussions periodically in the past, but I need to, we need to all be brought up to date with that. And then ultimately, what I, what I like about this, I think, from the mayor's point of view, is I think it's intended to possibly reduce a firehouse or, and/or create reorganization. But we need buy-in from the fire department for, uh, that buy-in on reorganization to try to, um, get better headcount assignments and reduce our minimum manning of one kind or another. I know we're in negotiations, and we can't talk about some of this stuff because we're in negotiations with the fire department employees. But somehow, this is all linked together, and it's hard to decide to vote 750,000 when we don't know how this is all gonna fit into place if, if we got buy-in. So it, I, I think, Mayor, you may be wanting to do an executive session tonight that may leave, uh, leave some light on this. And Chief, you got anything that'll be helpful?
Alderman, Redpath.
Uh, so, it, how did, how did we get to this point? Who, who did this RFP? And, uh, is there, is there no company in Springfield that can do, uh, to do the design work for this? Who, who put this together?
Uh, through, with purchasing, uh, we put out an RFQ actually to start. Uh, I believe we, we received between eight and 10 firms, uh, some better positioned than others to, uh, be able to fulfill what we were looking for. After we went through a, a first phase, uh, with, with the mayor's office and, uh, purchasing and, uh, looked everything over, we, we came up with, uh, four finalists, two of which were, uh, s, local. Uh, when I say local, that doesn't mean it's a firm that is bidding that's from Springfield. They may have some type of affiliation with, with Springfield. A lot of times, you'll have an engineering group and an architecture group that will get together to put together a bid on this. But the architects may be from California, but they, they get in with an engineer, a local engineering group, try and present themselves as being local, and it's not always as it seems. Uh, we had two that were local and two that I would call semi-local, um, within the state or over down in the, uh, collar areas of St. Louis. Uh, the, the company that we decided on, uh, has an office in Belleville and one in St. Louis. There was one, one, uh, architecture firm that is from Springfield. Um, there was one that was kind of what I was saying about, they pa, they, they kind of got together with, uh, another, another firm, and part of it would maybe be people from Springfield, but a lot of it wouldn't be. Uh, and then there was a couple, uh, that were not in Springfield, but they were Peoria, Bloomington, up by Chicago.
Well, Chief, when was the last time we built a firehouse?
The last time we did?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe it was 97.
Okay. And what would make this such an expensive, uh, engineering, architectural cost that we couldn't use the plans that we had for the other firehouses? What, is there something special going into this that we don't know about that, that'd be changed, why do we have to do that? I mean...
The last one that we did was Station One, so in that case, yes. We're not gonna build one of that size and scope.
Cokey Mill is probably one of the, one of the latest ones.
Cokey Mill is also, yes, one of the, one of the more recent ones. Um, and we're looking at, um, with Cokey Mill, you know, as, uh, Alderman Hanauer was, was talking about, you know, some changes with that one too. Basically, what has happened over, you know, the last 25 years is some things have changed as far as, uh, it's essentially what's called an essential services facility. Um, it has a little bit, uh, higher, um, standards for the type of construction that goes into it. Basically, what it is, is it's, it's on the same level as, uh, when you build a hospital as far as if a tornado comes through town like it did in 2005, um, that it may knock the houses down around it, but it's not going down. Uh, that also protects our apparatus, allows us to still respond during those, uh, during those situations, uh, does lead to higher costs, obviously. It's, it's, it's gotta be built to a higher standard. Uh, currently, there's also higher, uh, standards as far as energy codes. You're talking about, you know, it's gotta have more insulation, and you gotta have a different kind of roofing. Um, there's just all sorts of things that go into it. And then, you know, one of the other things that, uh, most municipalities are recognizing is that there's ways to design a firehouse too, and they may cost you a little bit more on the front side, but they save you money down the road on certain things as far as design level of, uh, providing spaces so that we can keep carcinogens out of our, uh, out of the areas of the firehouse where our people work, eat, sleep, all that kind of stuff. Uh, it used to be, you know, my dad was on for 27 years before I got on the fire department, and they backed the fire truck in there, the exhaust shot all over their gear, they opened the door, they went in in their rig gear, and, uh, the world is a different place than it was then. And we recognize that possibly that's not the best way to, to design these. And, and with that comes expertise, and it, it comes at the cost.
But Cokey Mill stations a little bit, it, that's been designed better than those, uh, like, like Number Four or some of the Number Seven.
It is better. You're, you're correct.
So, you know, it, it just baffles me that this kind of money, and I, look, there's one essential firehouse that has to be done, and that's the one in Ward Six. Because they've been landlocked, and they can't, they can't get out to the thing. Ward Eight is a, a concern of ours because of the traffic.
Sure.
And Ward Four, and the one at 19th Street, uh, Number Four, we want to move out, I understand, to Dirksen Parkway to cover the, the very northeast side of the city. But those aren't, those two, last two aren't as essential as Number Six is. And, um, and I know that the, this plan is gonna take in all three of those firehouses, but I, I just think it's an enormous amount of money, and...
I, I would offer to you this. I, I do not disagree one bit that, uh, we're looking forward to getting the, uh, the information back from the consultants and seeing what they have to say. I will, I will say this, I was not under the impression when I spoke to them that the relocation portion of where our firehouses are situated was the highest priority of what they were gonna look at. Now, maybe they discussed it more with somebody other than me.
I don't know either, Chief.
Right. I, I thi, I think it's gonna be in there somewhere, but I don't think, but I don't think that one of the main things that we paid them for was to say, if we wanted to move five firehouses, how could we do that? I don't think that that's, I don't think that that's something that was one of their main focuses. I, we did give them some options as far as we did know that Six and Eight, uh, were two firehouses that we feel are, are our most immediate needs. And quite frankly, we're looking at other situ, we are looking, I am, I am the person that, that put the preemption, uh, system into place. We recognize that we want to get to the southwest corridor faster. That's an option, that's a place we're looking. We recognize on the north end, uh, we're currently, uh, talking to, uh, the state of Illinois about the fairgrounds and whether or not, uh, having a fire, firehouse out on the fairgrounds is the best place for us. That may give us other options of moving things around and, and, uh, to Alderman McMenamin's point, making sure that we're putting things in the right places. Um, there's a lot of moving parts, and that's, that's the hard part about this. But in, in discussions with the mayor, um, this is not a fast process anyway. And we just wanted to pick who we, who we thought was gonna do the best job of designing firehouses as early as possible, because it's not a fast process. And they also have expertise on telling us, okay, this lot is better for, for a station than this lot. Um, so before we could really go out and, and settle on some parcels of land, we wanted to get their expertise as well. They offer that as well, so...
So do you still have the plans for the Cokey Mill station?
I think they're on the second floor somewhere. I haven't looked for them in a while. I found the, the ones for Nine not too long ago, and I think they were in Crayon.
Have, have we lost any firehouses to tornadoes?
We did not lose any. Um, we had the one that went right by Nine, actually, and...
And it stood right there, stayed up, right?
It did, well, it was built a long time ago. They built stuff better back then.
Alderman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Chief, thank you. I, I think you've kind of clarified things a little bit for me, so of course, that means I have two questions. Um, the first one is, what's the timeline for this work to be done? I mean, this is just, my understanding is that we're just authorizing this to happen, not that they, they're gonna start drawing up anything for us next week, right?
Right. Um, the discussions that I've had with them so far is, uh, obviously, we want to make sure that we have a contract in place. We're not gonna ask them to do anything before we get a contract in place. And then we can discuss a little bit better. They've been very good about suitability of some parcels that we've looked at. But as far as when we get the parcels purchased, then they can, they can start, or at least under contract, they can start with the design process. The, that design process is probably gonna take anywhere from three to four months. Um, and that'll get us into the winter, so they wouldn't be, wouldn't be breaking, uh, ground on that anyway. Then we're gonna have, um, some bid letting as far as the contractors and the actual work being done. And we believe that if the, the timeframe for that, we could, if we have the, if we get everything in place the way that we, we want to, we can break ground early in calendar year 2022, possibly be, with a, with the hopes of finishing by the end of calendar year 2022. They say about the fastest that they can push a firehouse as far as being built the right way is about 10 months as far as once you get past the design, uh, portion and the bed, the bid letting. So we're hoping that, you know, about maybe 14 months from now, we'll be having a big pair of scissors and be able to go out there, but...
On, on three stations, or would that just be the first?
I would, the way that we've started is, is that we, in discussions with the mayor, is, is that Six and Eight are for sure, and kind of just the discussion that, that we've talked about tonight, um, do we want to go northeast? Do we want to go southwest? There's, there's, I think that there's an opportunity for us, uh, also to, if, if we do the first two, but, uh, have the designs very similar anyway, there's some cost savings that you can have there. So if we know this really works for us, just make us two more of these, then that's a good idea. I would love for Six and Eight to start at the same time, but I understand, I mean, it's, it's up to the people sitting in this room too, to, to say, yeah, that's the way we should go. Uh, I'm okay personally, I'm, uh, and, and this is why I'm, we're talking about this, I'm okay with waiting on the third one to make sure that we're getting what we want and we figure out where it's, where the other one is gonna, gonna go. I think that that's a prudent move. I don't think that force-feeding three firehouses at once is necessarily, uh, the best move. But maybe you figure out next summer, you want to start on the third one. Then you have the information that we want. We get everything back from the consultants. I think that, I think that's a prudent way to do it.
So this, and this is an up-to contract, right? We're, we're being, we would be billed at an hourly rate?
It is.
So, okay, so...
Yes, it's a maximum, yes.
And then I have, I guess, um, a clarification question for the mayor. The ordinance title says, um, sorry, reading glasses, um, 750,000, but the actual body of the ordinance says 725,000. So I just, it's, and it, the 725 number's more, more frequent, so I don't, which, do we know which one is the right value?
Uh, it should be, uh, we, excuse me, we can check that. It should be the 750 is my understanding. And I don't know if where it says 725, there might be some additional costs to get it up to the 750.
It says it in here a couple of times that we're, um...
You can check that.
Okay, yeah, just because it's not to ex, that was the thing that I was getting at mostly, was that it's a not-to-exceed number. So, you know, as you said, Chief, if we get one design and we move that to three places, that cuts design cost down.
That's the goal, is that we are trying to make sure that this is cost-effective and make sure that, you know, on, on a, just an operational level for the people that, uh, work in our business, it's much easier to have the same, all of the places similar so that, you know...
Sure, so you can go anywhere you need to.
Sure, yeah, this makes us more efficient.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just to, to help, really, this is just an initial step, because it has to come back to the council. For example, property acquisition for the bidding, you know, all the different steps still have to come back. This is just the preliminary step to help identify potential properties and then look, basically, work on a common design.
Alderman Hanauer.
Have we had any type of, uh, study done in the last, uh, five to 10 years on where firehouses should be located? And if we have, why don't we pull that study out and look at it and, and see? Because I can't believe we haven't done a study of that, that sort. You know, um, it's, it's a very, it, it's a tough situation because neighborhoods don't like firehouses moved out of their neighborhood, right, obviously. But, um, we also, we have new neighborhoods that, you know, it takes, we've had to put traffic, uh, devices in to, to, to help speed, and that, that has helped, but it's still not as good as having a, a house there. What I'd like to see is, if, if we don't have a study, we need to, we need to have a study and, and, and say, this is where they need to go. Because I'm, you know, we can move forward, but it sounds like you guys already know where you want them. And, and, and I, what I'm seeing is, the southwest part of town is not part of it. It's not part of it.
I'll offer this to you. The, the ones that we're looking at as far as the, the first two are moving within, you know, several block radius of where they are currently. Um, maybe up to a mile, probably not more than a mile. And those are two, because of, you know, there's, there's mitigating factors. As far as if, whether we need to go northeast or whether we need to go southwest, I don't disagree with you. It's been a number of years since we've had an outside person that came in and did only a firehouse study. Uh, Chief Reine did, uh, did a internal version last year. We've worked with GIS, uh, within the city and looked at, they put the polygons in the map as far as, uh, a four, four-minute response, uh, area, which is what we like to use for that. Well, what if we move it over here? What if we move it over there? Uh, we've done some internal stuff, um, but we have not had a, uh, we have not had an outside agency come in and give us their opinion in maybe 12 years, I think, was the last time that they did that. And I can make that available to you. I can, I can find that, 'cause 12 years...
Lots change in 12 years.
Sure.
You know?
I, I'd like to see the internal work. I mean, I, I think we hire our chiefs for their expertise. Chief Reine wasn't all that bad, so...
Pretty good at means.
Some people have differing opinions on that. Timing wasn't as strong, see?
But that, that would be interesting, thank you.
Where, where is this money gonna come from? Do you know, Julie?
Yeah, hang on, I'm sorry. It was budgeted currently, if you remember, there was a large amount budgeted from Fund 95, Capital and Resorts Fund. And then, uh, an amendment by Alderman Donilon took that down quite a bit to the amount that we have now. And so it's currently covered by projected cash flow.
Is the total amount budgeted?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Are we talking about the 750,000 or the construction cost?
The whole thing. Is it the 750 part of the, of the proposal?
The, the original was 10 million was budgeted. Alderman, Donnell, I believe, took that to 2.5, and that was for land acquisition, architect fees, to get the ball rolling on possible construction costs. So this 750 would come out of that 2.5.
Look, Chief, we, we know we got to move these firehouses. We know we got to move them around, but I agree with Alderman and Hanauer that we need to have a strategic plan that's in place that we know exactly, because we might have to move more. And we got to make the east side, they got one firehouse between Stevenson Drive and Sangamon Avenue. I mean, that's one firehouse. They could use additional stuff over there, too. But the bottom line is, is that we don't want to make a mistake, and if we're, if we're going to, if we're going to piecemeal this, it's not the way we should be doing stuff. We should be having a strategic plan of where they all have to be moved to. Number seven is a, probably one of the oldest stations we have, and we've ran into the situation where the neighborhood just don't want to move, but it's really not strategically in a great place. It, the way we've configured everything over the years, and I've seen every, every plan we've ever had, but we just got to have that. And we, we really need to have the information before we vote on this.
Understood.
I think we ought to hold this in committee.
I'd be willing to second that.
Yes, Mayor.
Two things. One, we're having the architect come next week with regards to plans. That's the problem with Springfield. Plans are sitting on the shelf for 12 years, and we're in these tough negotiations because we haven't been able to build a firehouse because of the way it's structured. Firehouse today is not the same structure as was pre-1970s. Everybody understands that. But you have to move the fire stations. And you can look at the plan, they're not going to say, right here in the plan, it's on Walnut and MacArthur or wherever. It's going to give you a geographic area. That's where the pods come in. So they assess that, and that's where we come up with the geographic gaps of service. So Chief told you, it's the northeast side, southwest side, and the ones we definitely have to move is the one by Alice Park that's landlocked, and then the one off Chatham Road, just because that'd be moved out to the north with regards to that. So that's what we're taking a look at in those areas. But Chief's right, with the first two, you make those, but if we have the property, I think Alderman and Hanauer brought it up, there is property the city owns right there on Woodside and, uh, Woodside Road and Route Four. We're not sure, part of it's in a floodplain, so can you even build on that? We're not sure. Access to Route Four, we're not sure, but that's something we'd take a look at through this whole process. But you have to start the process because a day delayed is a dollar short. We're going to be, as we move into the future, everybody understands that. The cost of doing business is going up exponentially. So that's why we're moving it forward, and we put ourselves in a good cash position with regards to this due to the infrastructure fund. We have other, you know, American Rescue Plan dollars for revenue replacement. So there's, we have avenues today that we will not have in the next few years. So right now, when you're, we're sitting here, we have the most money available, or will be available to the city of Springfield as all cities across the country with the infrastructure bill paid, thanks to Senator, or passed, Senator Durbin and Senator Duckworth. With regards to the American Rescue Plan, same thing, passed by one vote, thanks to our senators. So they understand the importance of infrastructure, and we cannot protect our citizenry enough. Alderman and ours, you know, that's one of the reasons for looking at that area. Should it be a firehouse? I'm not sure. Should it be, you know, EMS? I'm not sure. You know, that's what we're trying to take a look at. And the company, the architectural firm, they have the best expertise with regards to that. But the other part, and Chief can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're the lowest bidder with regards to that RFQ.
They were, I mean, they were all right there. The, I mean, this sounds like a lot of money to design fire, firehouses, but they were all within, you know, a couple thousand dollars. It was really not, you know, the, the, what it came down to was not, we're picking the most expensive, we're picking the least expensive.
But why not have a real plan instead of just saying this is what we're going to do? Because then we're going to come back and say we need one on the southwest side, we're going to say we need one on the east side? We're going to say, what if we have to move the one that's from the fairgrounds? Sorry about that, I get hit in the damn thing.
And can you please address the Chair before addressing the Chief?
What?
Can you please address the Chair before addressing the Chief?
I thought it was in the conversation, Mr. Chair, Madam Chairman.
That's not really how it works.
Well, to, to discuss what you're talking about, here's what we do know, is we know that we have needs for six and eight. Here's what we don't know, is that we haven't gotten the consultant's report back yet that may or may not contain more than what I think is going to be in there as far as these are our areas of need. Maybe it's going to say both, and then we're going to have to come back here and we're going to have to say, are we going to pick one or are we going to do them both? I mean, we're talking about a 50 to 70-year commitment that we're trying to put into these buildings, but it's a lot of money, and I understand that. And I'm, it, it's one of those things, I, we don't have the information yet, but we do know, the information we do know, is that six and eight have to be, have to be moved. The other ones, I think, you know, especially, like I said, you know, Station 10 being on the, on the fairgrounds, is that the best place for that to be? Maybe we can, at some point, maybe we find out that's not the best place it could be, and the manning that we have there can be moved southwest if we build another house, and that we still have an opportunity to move to the northeast.
Well, and that, that, can I speak?
Alderman, Redpath.
And that, that's the whole point. The whole point is if we decide we got to move 10 to the southwest time and we move firehouse number four out to Dirksen Parkway, Ward Four's not covered. It's, it's a big gap there to downtown Springfield. So that's why we, that's why we need to really talk about a plan.
I understand what you're saying, and I think until we get the, I, I think that the first part of the plan, those rocks, I don't think that there's any chance that they're going to say, well, you should leave the number six that's pinned in and number eight that's, that's pinned in by traffic. And then are they going to come back and give us a good, is, are the consultants going to provide that information? The way I understand it, the consultants should be providing us with the report within four, four weeks or so. So, I mean, maybe we'll have that, that kind of information by then.
Julie?
Julie, thank you. I did speak with Director McCarty, okay, I'm sorry. I spoke with Director McCarty earlier today. The consultants will have a first draft of the city shortly after Labor Day. We will review it internally, and then they plan on coming to council sometime in October.
Alderman, Hanauer.
Thank you. I don't have a problem with this going next week, so we can have the, have the architects come in and they can tell us what they do, but I, I kind of would rather just pu, push it back to, to committee at that point until we see the, the, you know, the, the report that Julie just talked about. I, I think that it's important that we, we look at that first, and nothing again, you know, we know we got to move six. We know we have to do that. Eight, I know the, the, what, what I'm hearing is, is that the Starbucks is moving to, to, down the block to Fair Hills. I'm not sure if that's true or not, older woman.
It would be nice if they would buy the, our other property, but, you know.
But I've heard, I've heard rumors of that. And so, you know, I just think we need to, before we go forward, we need to, we need to make sure we see what, what the experts have. And, and, you know, so I, I don't care if we hold it, but I think if the architects are already planning on being here, we ought to at least hear them out, and then we can decide, you know.
They can make it next week. It's actually going to be two weeks.
In two weeks?
Okay, so the, Alderman, McMenamin.
Hold it then. I agree that we need a long-term plan, and that long-term plan can mean we can move sequentially on the firehouses. I think the landlocked firehouse at, at Ash and the fire, and the railroad tracks is a top priority because it's, it's landlocked. We got to do that under any circumstances. Beyond that firehouse, I'd like to see the results of our negotiations with our, our fire union. I think we're all looking for operational savings and, and organizational savings and overtime savings and minimum manning savings and those kinds of things. And I'd like to see those, some results of that before we put more money into firehouses. And I'll also say this, you know, everyone's concerned about fires, and we have somewhere between 200-plus personnel dedicated to fighting fires, but blight and neglect is everywhere in about five wards, I'd say. It's, it's very, it's a significant problem, and we look, and we think about blight and neglect. We have, what, eight inspectors plus two supervisors and maybe two in legal that concentrate on that? Maybe we've got 10 or 12 staff that work on blight and neglect. And blight and neglect produces crime, it produces fires, it produces a lot of things. It produces devalued property values and so forth. So it's just hard for me to be putting, and I think there's a constituency out there. It's hard for our voters and our taxpayers to put all this money towards fire, and we see these other problems around that are going, that are not sufficiently addressed. So that's why I ca, I can't vote for this in its present form. If it's scaled down, I can maybe vote for it. So that's where I'm at.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion, we hold this. I withdraw my debate, then just hold it in committee.
Is there a second? So there's been a motion to hold this and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to hold this ordinance.
General City Business, 2021-343, an ordinance authorizing a transfer of budget authority from one account to another in the amount of $18,000 for the Department of Budget and Management.
Move to consent. We have a motion for consent. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second for consent. Yes, Alderman and Redpath.
Julie, can you explain this, please?
Certainly. There is a little correction ahead of this. Money's actually held in the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Originally, AmeriCorps was run by a former employer, employee who resigned the city of Springfield. Now we have a contractor running the grant, so we're saving those fringe costs. So when I wrote the budget, I put it in the 1100 series for salary lines, and now we need to have it moved to the right place for contractual services.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
2021-344, an ordinance amending Chapter 100 of the 1988 City Springfield Code ordinances as a, to increase the hotel and motel tax by 1% from 7% to 8%.
Chair?
Yes.
We have the next four ordinances, 344 through 347. I'll deal with the legacy point details that we've already voted on in the previous ordinance. This is just implementation. I would like to, I'd move for an omnibus vote on 344 through, through 347.
So there's been a motion for an omnibus vote for 344 through 347. Is there a second? They're all things we've already voted on. Okay, discussion?
My only discussion would, would be, and Madam Chair, if I may speak, my only discussion would, would be, and, and, you know, I was a no vote on this, not because of the, the, the sports complex, but really the developers' unwillingness to, to be forward-thinking and, and this really helped our whole community. So we're past that. So I, I can't get in good faith, you know, vote for us to raise the taxes, you know, for it. That's just why I'm at for it.
Alderman and Redpath.
I'll second the motion for omnibus vote.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for omnibus vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Discussion.
Yes, Alderman and McMenamin.
So I'll be a no vote on this also. I'm for the sports complex. I'm just against the way we've financed this. We're depending, depending too much on taxpayers for a private activity. So I'll be a no vote on the omnibus. But also, in addition to that, just as a technical matter, these ordinances all affect our city code, and there's no, in these, in the versions of these that I saw, there's no proposed code languages change, changes. So from a, to do this right, you know, our, our legal staff has to go in and see what needs to be changed in our city code. Because for down the road, you know, future city councils and staff, they need to look at our code for what the law is. They, they don't want to be looking at an ordinance that, that no one knows when it was passed. So that's the way we usually do things. And could, could that be done for next city council meeting, I hope? Corporation Council?
No, so you did it wrong.
The, the only code change is actually 2021-344, which raises the tax from 7 to 8%. That is an actual code change, and it's attached to the ordinance. The others are simply authorizing rebate agreements, or rebates, and so those are not per se code changes. But we've done various other examples, would be sales tax rebates or property tax rebates. So they do not per se require a change to the city code. These are authorizing rebate, effectively rebate agreements, consistent with the original redevelopment agreement that the council had voted on with, I think, a pretty extensive discussion. So the only actual code change is the one relating to 344, which raises from 7 to 8. The others relate to rebating, for example, taxes in that area, which we've already actually done in part when the special service district was done and various things like that.
Well, I, I agree. I, I missed that, that one of the four does provide a code language change.
And you're, you're very right to ask that because this is very complicated in fairness to everybody. These are the, if you remember, the development agreement called for the city council to consider or to approve enabling ordinances to establish the funding. So that is what these do, but they're still subject to the requirements of that development agreement. In other words, the work has to be done, has to be done according to the agreement. Any disbursements have to be done according to that development agreement. So these are the enabling ordinances to put in effect the redevelopment agreement, but it is still contingent on the developer, you know, performing those requirements.
Correct.
If, if that helps.
So I think it's good that you made it one code change of the four, but in my view, the other three should really become new code sections of our code so that the public can see that there's a precedent being set here for how we finance. And that's just my recommendation. You don't, you don't have to follow it, but I think it's helpful for people, for everyone to see what's in our code, what's been given to certain development strategies.
I, I would be happy to go back and revisit that or look at that if it's appropriate to insert a section dealing maybe just with legacy point, and I'll be happy to do that before the council meeting, look at it.
Okay, so there was a motion for an omnibus vote and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One no here, maybe more.
2021-345, an ordinance authorizing a 2% hotel motel tax rebate for Legacy Park Sports LLC per development agreement and dated June 15, 2021, to develop a sports complex within the projected area. 2021-346, an ordinance authorizing a city property tax rebate for Legacy Park Sports LLC per the development agreement dated June 15, 2021, to develop a sports complex within the project area. 2021-347, an ordinance authorizing a sales tax rebate agreement for Legacy Park Sports LLC per the development agreement dated June 15, 2021, to develop a sports complex within the project area.
I was going to make a motion for consent, but given clearly there are people who want to vote against us, I'll say motion for debate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm in favor of that, and I misunderstood the previous one. I was in favor of the omnibus. Mr. Clerk, would you correct my vote on that if you need record of that?
No, it isn't.
Doesn't matter now.
Your yes.
It doesn't matter now.
It's done.
2021-348, an ordinance authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding with Sangamon County, Illinois, to allocate funds received in connection with FY 2021 Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program from the U.S. Department of Justice.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can, can you, can I, can I be reminded on what we use these funds for, Chief?
We typically use this money yearly for cars. They'll buy basically one car, then help equip that car, as well as potentially help equip a second car. We won't purchase a second car because the money's been diminished.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion?
It was for consent. It was for consent.
A motion and a second for consent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
2021-349, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 30 outfitted 2021 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles from Morrow Brothers Ford Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $1,499,400 under State Contract 19-416 CMS-Bosses4-P-11453 for the Springfield Police Department.
Move to consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for consent. Any discussion?
Julie, what's the funding source for this?
This is from the annual equipment lease purchase.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
2021-350, an ordinance accepting RFP number PD-22-07, a three-year contract with OptherSense Incorporated for an alert system for the public internal mass messaging notifications for an annual amount of $18,150 and for a total amount not to exceed $54,450 for the Springfield Police Department.
So move for consent?
Second.
Question.
Yes, Alderman and Hanauer.
Real quick on this, I know the county has a system too. Are, do we use the same system as them, and would we get a better rate if we combined them? I don't know. Are we using a separate system, different system, or?
Yeah, Chief can, sorry.
Come on up, Chief.
No, this is the same system we've had for probably 10 years or longer. I know the county just rolled one out earlier this year. It is different, different service provider. We put this one out for a bit, I understand. Tom's not here to talk about it. We put it up for RFP. This was the best deal that we got again.
Thank you.
Alderman and Conley?
Thank you, Chair, Chief. Sorry. Is this a service that residents can sign up for to get text alerts?
Absolutely. You can sign up for it through the city's website, through our website. Everybody uses it. CWP is public work users. We use it citywide for missing children alert. If we have a natural disaster of some type or a bad storm comes through, we use it for different areas. You can break it down geographically. You can make it citywide, et cetera. You know, you can use it for different things, but it's one of the ways that we use. We replaced the old City Watch system from probably 20 years ago. I don't know if you remember that or not, but it does everything.
Yeah, 20 years ago, I was busy doing small children. So, thank you, Chief. I think it'd be nice to make sure we highlight this one again. We've got the rotating banner. I'm not sure how many people know about this service. I've had people ask me about it, so.
All right, so we have a motion for consent and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
2021-351, an ordinance appointing Michael A. Hurwitz to the Springfield Economic Development Commission.
Do you move?
Second. Is Mr. Hurwitz here?
No, he's in, I think he's having a new baby, and I think he's tied up.
That's right, that's right.
In fact, I called his dad and congratulated him, said he hasn't had it yet. So I was a little ahead of time.
You are correct. Okay. So all those in favor of debate?
Aye.
2021-352, an ordinance approving the appointment of Samantha Gaddy to the Civil Service Commission.
Do you debate?
Second.
Chair, I'd like to make sure we're following proper procedures.
All those in favor for debate?
Aye.
I just want to, if it's okay with you, with Chairwoman, I just want to give some background on Samantha Gaddy. We worked together under the past gubernatorial administration. She was a senior policy advisor. She was a policy advisor for Lisa Madigan when she was on the, when she was the Attorney General. She works for the Illinois Department of Juvenile Justice, and I believe she'll be a great asset to this council.
Well, she also lives in Ward 6, so.
Exactly. Or commission, rather. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. So the mayor and I had a conversation in the last week or two. This is one of the paid commissions?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Yep.
And do you recall what the other paid commissions are?
Oh, my gosh. The.
Liquor Commission and zoning commission?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Are there any, the mayor, do you wish to comment more on what you're thinking about, Mayor, about whether there's a, any kind of a Democrat or Republican requirement for this particular commission?
Yes, sir, there is.
Could you explain that? I was unfamiliar with that.
Sure. So there's, the commission can't exceed more than four members of one party. Samantha is neither a Republican or a Democrat, so she is an independent. We had that cleared with Steve Ron, who is the counsel for the Civil Service Commission.
I see. And could, for the next council meeting, could we get a breakout of, I'm against having a partisan requirement of any kind.
I fully agree with you, which is why I'm excited that she accepted to be a part of this commission.
I think we should be blind to the D or the R label when we make these appointments, but I, could you?
That's, that is part of the conditions of that commission.
So that's set in our code, is that correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Kathleen, could you provide us with that code provision for the next meeting?
Absolutely.
Maybe that's something we want to take a look at, because I don't think that exists for any of the other commissions, and I don't know if it's a good idea or not.
I agree with you.
Yes, Alderman and Redpath.
So I wonder, we're a nonpartisan board, and why do we have this Corporation Council? Can you tell me?
It's required under state law.
Oh, there you go.
It's longstanding, it's longstanding with civil service that you cannot, because of its unique nature historically, it requires that you can't be, there must be a declaration, and you cannot have more than a majority party of any one size because of the requirements of Civil Service Commission.
Okay.
But I'll be happy to, we can get a copy of the statute, but it's been in place, I think, probably since the very beginning with civil service.
Alderman and Conley?
Thank you. With that said, Corporation Council, are we allowed to have someone on this commission who does not declare a party?
I will have to see exactly what the statute says. I think you, the limitation is you can't have a majority from any one party. But I will check the exact language and let you know that.
Because it sounded like you just said you have to have, you have to declare.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
Just some clarification before we.
Yeah, no, I will pull the statute.
Thank you.
It's intended so that, because Civil Service Commission, you know, historically was intended to be bipartisan, therefore no party could have a majority on the commission to set rules and hiring and so on. But I'll be happy to get you a copy of the statute.
How many members are on the Civil Service Commission?
There's seven, so there's four Democrats currently serving on the commission.
So there would be a majority party?
Yeah, that'd be you.
Right. So that would.
No, no, I'm sorry, there's eight. I apologize.
There's eight, okay. So that would still be a majority party.
We'll get a copy of the statute.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get a copy of the statute and make sure that everybody has that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
All right, any unfinished business? Alderman and Gregory?
Thank you. I want to get this out the way. So, you know, two weeks off is good for us to have that Tuesday off, but it's also a bad thing because it allows a lot of things to fester. So, you know, we've had a couple of things, and I just want to be brief with this. I probably don't want to have a big discussion, but if somebody can respond to me from the proper departments. So our tree program, I was happy to see some progress, but we are, we do miss way too many spots, especially on main throwaways and then in the communities where people stay. You know, I got about six or seven spots that I still need to be picked up. I do look for new and old leaves, so these things have been out there well before the 23rd, when we did start that section. And we got to do a little bit better with that because we really take hammering about that, because we're selling that to the people. I was made aware today that we are getting the Salvation Army grass cut. That's something that we've been talking about for a long time, and it shouldn't have to wait till tonight before council for us to get cut. I will say fly dumping is better in our, in our community, and I just want to check on that crew that we did added in the budget, as well as, you know, if we got all the equipment ordered and the people hired. This vacant property ordinance, Mr. Alderman McMenamin, I believe, introduced over 10 years ago, to find out it's not kept. I know we do have the records of houses in our, in our thing. I looked at a report, and I got to check this report, but, you know, 500 lots and houses and things that are not livable within our city. I believe somebody told me, just in my ward alone, I think that's a little much, but I can believe it, you know. So that's very disturbing to me to, you know, see that. So it makes me think back on the ordinances that I have passed and to really make sure that they're being effective, you know. So I am going to be looking into those. You know, I think we all on the council need to know when we're going to have this registry up or this list up, excuse me, on the website as in the code, and, you know, hopefully we don't have those lapses because we can't effectively deal with vacant properties if we don't have this list. I know there's several legal ramifications of timeframe and things, and we look to address that as well. For our police department, we do have a meeting. I did ask for a couple ordinances. So the reason why I'm doing this is because I've been working on patients and I've been trying to be patient, but I'm really losing some of them. So far, you know, our police, I do have an ordinance that I'm going to discuss tomorrow for our police review commission, as well as Chief, do you have any information on the software package that me and Doris put in the budget for you guys?
Yes, sir, they installed it. It went live probably the first part of August. I don't have the exact date, I won't say first week of August, but it is live and working so far. So basically, part of it is the review of body cameras. Before supervisors had an option to choose which ones they wanted to review, now it uses some kind of algorithm that basically picks it and tells them they have to review these in addition to our normal review of all use of force incidents, of abnormal handcuffing.
Well, that made me smile. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate you to hear that. So that program that we introduced is an analytical program and use some smart intelligence to really to look for, to ensure that our officers are living up to our mission statement without having a whole lot of manpower time and overtime to review those things. So I appreciate you, Chief. We also had a little report, I don't want to say a little report, but we did have a report about these stops. I would just like to, Chief, I would just like for you to, you know, wrap your mind around it and see how we can improve on it, and as well as, you know, make sure that we address in the community that we are aware of these things and that we are looking for transparency to see how we move forward and how we continue to grow a better community police relation. I'm almost done, I promise you. Fire, thank you. I definitely was going to ask that. I did see the numbers. I did see your 2023 projections, which I'm sure we all are cringing over, so we definitely got to keep working at that. I read it interesting, some of this may not be old business, but I did hear Alderman McMenamin talking about it several months ago about our police and our fire pension. I did see up in one of our northerning states on Capitol Fact how they bonded out some of their police and fire pension and it freed them up some money. I've been working with a person who specializes in actuaries and things like that, and they think that with our credit rating at the city, that we possibly may be able to do something similar to that. I know we'd be taking on debt, et cetera, but could possibly probably save us, free us up six to seven million possibly. It is something I'll send to Budget Director McCartney and meet with him and try to understand it a little further, but I, you know, I definitely will lean on others to advise me. But I think that we got to get to talking about it and throwing it up against the wall at least to see if it will help us go through. And finally, I have received several emails from prospective engineers, architects, who have high interest in many of the roadwork that is being planned for War II, and they want a fair shock on that. So I encourage us to ensure that we look for minority companies to bid those, to give us a bid on those. And I would like to see some history on the numbers to see how we're doing that. I want to look at that to see how we can get those numbers up. It's a major concern. On the flip side, we are encouraging more minority companies to get certified and things and pay attention to these bids as they come out. So I appreciate it, and that's all I got today.
Any other new business coming for the committee?
Ma'am?
Yes.
Yes. So Nate, I don't see Daryl here, so hopefully you can answer this. So in the branch pickup that just happened, it went pretty smooth. There was a lot of cleanups happening this time of year, but city-owned lots. So the neighborhood associations or groups, I'll say, are cleaning up, and when they clean up, they decide to stack it on the city, the lot that's owned by the city. Then the crew comes down and says, well, they're picking them up in front of people's houses, but the group put them on the city lot, but then they drive by the city lot. So I need to get some clarity with the department on that. Because it's on the lot is because that's the designated area that this group decided to put them all on, because they said, oh, that's the city lot, they got to cut it anyway, and then they'll pick up the branches. I think they convinced some of those crews to go ahead and get it, but I know they didn't get them all. So if we can get some clarity on how that works, and if you guys prefer us not to use city-owned lots, even though they know they're owned by the city, then I could tell the groups to stop putting the branches, you know, on the city on lots. I didn't know how you felt about that.
Sure. Well, if it's all coordinated with our operations coordinator, we're aware of it and we know it's going there, and it's at one centralized location, that can make it more efficient for us to pick up. However, we need to make sure it's coordinated with them, and so I can give you the proper contact information.
Right, and I can do a better job at making sure they let the right person know that's intentional, that's not just a private lot with branches on it, you know, because I didn't know if our guys knew what's the city lot, what's not, you know. But I think sometimes we kind of overorganize ourselves, and that happened in a couple of instances around Fieldsbury, you know, where the city owns the lot and the branches are still out there. And now that time period has passed, they swept through there already. So if you could help me with that, I appreciate it.
Definitely will.
That's all I have.
One item is, we need to withdraw ordinance 2021-289. I think the contract's expired. I'll make a motion for that. That be appropriate, Corporation Council?
Excuse me, if the committee would like to do that at the request of the sponsor, that's entirely up to the committee or at the council meeting, whichever.
I don't have a problem with it. You motion to consent?
Yeah, withdraw it.
Withdraw it? Motion to withdraw? Is there a second?
It's actually held in committee, I believe. This is 289.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yep. So do we have a motion to put it on consent or debate?
No, it's to withdraw.
Just to withdraw it? Okay.
I'll make a motion to withdraw.
It's already been made.
But I don't think the mayor is part of this committee.
No, Ralph did.
Oh, sorry, Ralph, you got it?
I got it. I need a second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Chair?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I do want to say that it is still a priority that we get this updated.
I have the new contract that's been turned over to Bill McCartney today, and we'll be having some movement on it, we have it up until the next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Happy to report that we received or were awarded a $3.4 million debatement grant from HUD for the Office of Planning and Economic Development, and just want to give kudos to Krista Colas. She was the main driver for that, and Donna Dublantis, our grant writer, make that happen.
Alderman and Redpath?
So Mayor, we've talked about the ARP money, and I think it's important, are we close to having a plan on how we're going to spend that? We've all talked about different projects that we have to have in our wards.
I think the guidelines aren't quite out yet, are they? Julie Zogardar, she can comment on that.
You know, it's a silly thing. The final interim guidance was issued in June. It was 151 pages, and we still don't have the final, final guidance. So that's actually what we're waiting for.
So what I suggest is that when we get that, that we either have a meeting or a subcommittee or something to talk about how we all have input into this ARP money, because that's the most important part for us right now. We all have problems in our wards that need to be addressed and I wanna be part of that. So, thank you.
Yes, mayor?
Yeah, it'd probably be a part of the budget process is, you know, as far as infrastructure goes, it's pretty clear water, broadband and sewers. So we're, Nate Bottoms meeting with Santeri District this week with regards to sewers. We're trying to leverage dollars as much as possible. And so the greatest tranche, though, would be for revenue replacement and that would give us the greatest flexibility as a council to make determinations on other projects as we move forward.
Alderman Gregory?
Long as part of it ends up in Ward 1, mayor, I really don't care.
Good mayor. One thing I did wanna remind you, the fair is over. And when are we gonna roll out this business grant?
For what was that?
The business grant from the cannabis money. Fair is over.
Yeah, that'll be in first part of September.
All right.
Second week.
It's tomorrow.
September's tomorrow.
It's tomorrow. All right. Hey, don't do that to me.
I was gonna say September, but be the first half. How's that?
Appreciate it.
And they're in the process right now of, I think there's a, we can approve maybe three applications with regards to the home. Home improvement one. The others, we are going, we're in the process of scrubbing that list for individuals that applied and gave us their income level to see who qualifies for CDBG or home dollars, things of that nature, and tried to cross-reference those programs.
Well, I have heard from constituents in my ward and I'm sure it will have, they are delighted that they've been contacted and some of them are moving on to the next phase in this first round of home owner grants. So it is doing what it's meant to do and, you know, I'll be even more happier when this fund grows and wherever to help more people. So thank you.
Are we still in unfinished business?
I don't know what.
Can we move on to new business? Please, is this new? New business? I have something. I've been getting a lot of reports about water and that it smells and tastes irregular. I've been told that there might be extra chlorine being added to the water, but I just wanna address that. It is a pretty much citywide problem from what I have heard. So if anyone has any answers to that, that would be spectacular.
Unfortunately, I'm the only representative from CWLP and I am on the electric side. I'll get with Todd in the morning and get an answer for everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I think I know what it is, but I'm not gonna speak for him.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other new business? All right, we have a few citizens that have requested to address the council. We are going to start with Shatrea Smith.
Good evening, everyone.
Can you please state your name and address for the council?
My name is Shatrea Smith, the Executive Director for Garvey Tubman Cultural Arts and Research Center, 2040 Gregory Court, Springfield, Illinois 62703. I've come to speak to you all. Thank you, Alderman Chair, Decenzo. Thank you, Jim Langfelder, mayor, and all of the other aldermen being here today to hear these words. I've put together a package and I hope that I can get this done in five minutes. We are here to submit an overview of our program and the needs of support for the city of Springfield. This package includes a business plan to the best of my ability, activities highlighting completed successful outcomes of our program initiated by Garvey Tubman and soon-to-be-completed programs of our Black Artist Matter event sponsored by Arts Midwest, from also donations from community members. We would like to say how excited we are that we recently have come together with Ashberry Church and we have a building. It's 1319 South 13th Street. We have also just received a grant from Illinois Humanities and we are going to be recognized by the African American History Museum for their annual banquet gala. I'm really excited to share all of these things with you because we are doing so many great things in the community. Now, the mission of Garvey Tubman Cultural Arts and Research Center is to provide services of interest in the African American community, sharing valuable support system that speaks to the community's educational, emotional and cultural needs by providing high-quality, child-friendly and relevant subject matter. Garvey Tubman meets this mission through educational programs for youth ages five to 17 for successful futures in our Springfield students. We provide facilitated instruction with professional artists supporting emerging artists' minds. Garvey Tubman empowers through creativity, showcasing marketing skills, self-promotion through a mix of artistic learning that will foster lifelong connections and friendships in the future. Our authentic program is the only one of its kind in Springfield, Illinois. I do have an overview. I'm checking my time. The community recognizes that Springfield has funds and we would like to inquire how these are being implemented in the community. The community recognizes that the city of Springfield is obligated to the community with funding to assist programs to grow communities for the betterment of low-income families. Now, I understand what I'm about to say to you may not come as a surprise, but our non-Hispanic African American population leads in numbers of female-led households. For example, and this is juxtaposed, white households in the Springfield area, the percentage of female-only households is 0.01%. And for the black population, it is 7.66%. The numbers are astounding because Springfield Eastside specifically has numbers of a median income of $25,000 a year or less. So services for low-income families are necessary to grow the development of our overall community. This is imperative because single mother who raises children that make $30,000 a year can provide payment for programs to empower youth development, increase diversity in education, as well the likelihood of future civic engagement. Yet a family that makes $20,000 a year has very few options in investing in their youth's future growth and engagement. And we need to work together to rectify some issues. We will continue to have debilitating programs and progress in our east side if we don't come together. Garvey Tubman stands by the fact that we could do more and we could do more together. Helping our youth will take a major shift in perspective to get back on track, including new ideas, risk takers that need to be put in a position to change that trajectory. Our community's vision is not to reward neglect in struggling neighborhoods, but to incentivize community volunteerism with buy-in and investments to help other programs that incentivize and assist to thrive for both, in both prosperity and in hardship. Garvey Tubman Cultural Arts and Research Center has been incorporated since 2016 and we largely provide a number of service. An eight-week music course, free to the beneficiaries.
Your time's up. Your time's up.
I do have more information for you. I would be glad to email any one of you for any more information. I do have packets available if you would like to. Thank you for your time and have a great day.
And I would also suggest you talk to Juan Huerta and talk, there are programs within the city that could be helpful to you and your center. So I think you should explore those options and see what's available to you.
Thank you for that information.
Yes, it's a very worthy cause. I see your signs all over the place. I'm a supporter of the arts, so I really think you should see how we can help, how we can help get this off the ground a little more and give you some more stability.
Thank you for coming in.
No, I agree. Whatever I can do to help you, I'm with you. I'm just freezing.
But thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Jill Steiner.
Good evening. I'm Jill Steiner. I am 2328 Lynn Haven Drive and tonight I'm representing Icon. Icon has decided to go virtual this year again for our annual celebration. And so in addition to the Good Neighbor Awards, which we launch every year, and we did videos of those last year as well as having a Zoom panel, this year we wanna feature the wards. And we wanna each feature all of your wards, but we want you to think about carpool karaoke, but singing is not expected. Instead, we want to have an opportunity for you to share about your wards, but we want you to go across the shoe. So we want you to partner up with another older person and set a date where you give each other a tour of your ward and sometime between September 15th and October 15th. And we will arrange for filming of that tour so that we get an idea about you sharing what are the diamonds and dreams in your ward, how policies and initiatives that support or create ward diamonds, and what are the diamonds in the rough in your ward that could shine with just a little bit more help. We will do a video that would be produced by a professional company and each day of the week, a different set of wards would be done. And so we're just asking if you will play along and take this opportunity. So with your permission, I'd like to approach to hand out an invitation. Is that okay?
Thank you very much.
And as the invitation says, you would just contact me if you would like to take part and if you can already pick somebody across the shoe that you'd like to do with, just let us know so that we can arrange for that and we hope that you'll participate. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Last, we have Jesse Green, I believe. Is there Jesse Green here?
I believe that one's for October, chairwoman.
Nope, it's for today. Oh, no. Council meeting 1010. Okay. Elizabeth Crawford, I believe you wanted to speak?
Yes, please. Thank you, Alderwoman Decenzo. I sent you a message when I was on my way here. Earlier today, there was an incident at CWLP just a little bit before council started at 4:30. I wasn't here when you started, so I don't know if you've already discussed this. No? Okay. Well, let's talk about it then. I started getting phone calls almost immediately, folks saying, is there a fire at CWLP? What's happening? No, it seems that there was, and I haven't followed the bunny trail completely, but some sort of incident where there was fly ash at unit four that basically made a huge plume of dust. Coal ash is very, very dangerous, right? This is very bad for our air. The city has said nothing, right? Mary Langfelder publicly, there's no press release. CWLP has a very short statement and says, don't worry, the water's fine. And the CDC says it might be a little bad for your health. I went down there, my lungs were burning, my eyes were burning. It didn't say stay inside. A lady rode by me on her bike with her shirt over her head saying, what's going on? When are we gonna get leadership? Because how many incidents have happened at CWLP? This is unit four. This is not the first incident in unit four, unfortunately. Tonight, I think you all know what's happening is that the legislature is discussing an energy bill where I'm assuming Doug Brown, CWLP Chief Utility Engineer, is using city money to lobby against a clean energy bill. Is that really what's in the best interest of the city of Springfield when we are harming folks actively who live here with the pollution from unit four? I understand that that is not the intention, but that is certainly the impact. There's not a message that has gone out that says, stay inside, stay safe. What about the folks who are gonna go fishing on Spalding Dam? So I have a few follow-up questions. I'm looking at time and I wanna just make sure I go quick here. What measures are going to be taken to prevent further occurrences while this unit is running? Are you testing material that escaped? Who was this discussed with while the issue was happening? Are there plans for a report of the incident? With who and what information is gonna be shared of what happened and why it happened? Have you already contacted state or federal regulators? And what are your plans to report, to report this incident if you've not already contacted them? Again, tonight, CWLP is very likely using city money as they've been doing, saying, we don't want clean energy in Springfield while we're in the middle of a very dirty energy. I won't use the word disaster, but right, it's a mess. It's a big mess, especially for folks who have COPD, for folks who have asthma, for folks who have babies or who are elderly, or God forbid, folks who have COVID. So, chairwoman, I know you can't answer for all of this, but that's why I got in my car and ran down here.
Well, I can't answer for any of it because we just got, you know, we were getting pictures sent to us right before council. Then some of us got the email, the media advisory that this is what happened, but there was no explanation. So you know as much as I do. You probably know more than I do because we came in here at 5:20 to start a meeting. So you probably know a lot more than I do.
Mr. Rogers is still?
Oh, Scott can answer. Okay.
Yes, we had an issue with the valve in the fly ash silo and about around 4 o'clock. We did notify the agency. The only P was notified. They were on site. They did some air sampling onsite. I don't have any results of that. We don't have all the details. We got our fire hose out to get the dust down. The fire department came out and assisted with additional trucks to get the dust down. So around, it was around 5:20, 5:30, we had all the dust settled and now we're just in the middle of cleanup and trying to get all the details on the, what caused it, what happened. So we will have a report out. We'll at least have information sometime tomorrow. I don't know what report we'll put together, but we'll have information out. Thank you.
So more information to come.
Thank you.
All right. I think we have an executive session this evening. Is that true, Corporation Council?
I don't think we need one unless there's a specific question that anybody has.
No.
No.
All right.
Motion is adjourned.
Second.
We are done.
Hey, Aaron, you wanna be my carpool?
Okay, I'll let them know.
Good job as usual.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I think they're trying to help because they said, oh, yeah. Okay. I'll make sure I talk with that and let them know.